Hearing on Middlesex Integrative Medicine. So, members of my committee are Counselor Shalafu Zephra, who is the clerk, and Counselor Brandon Robbins, who's the third member. And we also have with us Attorney Alex Lychite from KP Law. So, let's start if the principals could be at the table. That would be helpful at this table.
For MEM, for Middlesex Integrative Medicine? Okay. And I'm counsel to Middlesex Integrative Medicine. I assume I can...
Absolutely.
And I'm going to request that you speak loudly because I'm dealing with some type of a sinus issue, so...
I can do that.
And into the microphones.
Sure.
Do we have any others representing Middlesex in any form?
No, this is us.
Oh, we have someone raising his hand in the back.
Just as a consultant.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to come to the table? And Mr. Crowley, would you want to come up front as well?
Sure.
Okay. Would you just check, see that the red light is on your microphone so that...
This has, well, now there's a red light on, yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah.
All right. Kevin, if we start with you, we'll go left across.
I don't know if this is what, can you hear me? It doesn't have a red light.
There you go. It's on now.
Get a kind of holder for a second. And the red light will come on.
Nope. This one doesn't have the red light.
I think that's a different microphone.
You should be good enough.
Hello?
Yep, that works.
Okay. My name is Kevin Crowley. I represent Mohawk Drive Corporation.
My name is Stephen Chason. I'm a consultant with MEM.
My name is Nick Carter. I'm attorney to the receiver, David Engel, on behalf of Middlesex Integrative Medicine.
I'm David Engel. I'm the receiver.
I'm sorry?
I'm David Engel, and I'm the receiver for Middlesex Integrative Medicine.
Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight. We have a lot of questions. I hope you have a lot of answers because this is something that has been going on for quite some time. And we also have with us in the back Luke Bolak, who's our code enforcement officer that many of you have been dealing with, our chief of the fire department Sidlow, and Chief Malatas from the police department. And we also have Ryan Young, deputy chief. And I know many of these have been into the building at one time or other, and we're trying to learn as much as we can tonight. I will say that I don't think we're going to accomplish any type of a resolution tonight. We may, because we have limited time, we may have to continue this hearing. And at the end of the meeting, we will probably take a few minutes for our committee to go into executive session with the attorney to talk about our next step. So, with that, I'm going to see which one of you would like to start the conversation. All right? Mr. Carter, nice and loud, please.
Thank you. As I said, I represent David Engel, who is the receiver for Middlesex Integrative Medicine, Inc. He was appointed receiver in October of 2023 by the Superior Court of Massachusetts. Since then, as receiver, he's been operating the company. Currently, due to a dispute with the landlord, which is, that dispute is now pending in U.S. bankruptcy court because the landlord, Mohawk Drive Corporation, chose to litigate in bankruptcy court. There had been litigation in the Superior Court, in the business litigation session in Suffolk County. Prior to that, a trial was scheduled for the beginning of May 2024 before Judge Krupp. And rather than proceed to trial, Mohawk Drive Corporation elected to bring the dispute to bankruptcy court. And that dispute basically is who is responsible for the leaking, substantial ongoing leaking, which has caused enormous damage to the cannabis crop over years in the amount of millions of dollars. We were prepared to try that case, as I say, back in May 2024. Mohawk brought the case to bankruptcy court. That slowed things down substantially. We're looking to get a trial in the bankruptcy court on that issue. But let me get to what I think the city cares about because...
If I could, I have to interrupt you for just one second.
Absolutely.
We have another counselor that came in to attend the meeting as well, Counselor Cormier. So, I do have to read a statement that this notice of the City Council Committee of the whole meeting is posted in the event that a quorum of the City Council is present at this standing committee meeting. If less than a quorum and the City Council is present, no committee of the whole meeting shall take place. Quorum is present, any such meeting shall be restricted to the standing committee agenda items listed above. So, I just needed to legally announce that. So, I apologize for the interruption.
That's fine. What I think the city is concerned about is not this dispute between a landlord and a tenant over who caused the harm to the cannabis crop, but rather, how is the company operating in a way that impacts the city? So, but the background is important because very recently, I think in the last 10 days, the parties entered into an agreement that's been endorsed by the court, the bankruptcy court, for an orderly exit of Middlesex Integrative Medicine from this facility and from the city of Leominster. That agreement, as I say, which has been endorsed by the bankruptcy court, calls for MEM to be fully out of the facility, having removed the equipment and material and biomass by the end of August, no later than the end of August of this year. As part of that agreement, MEM has agreed to build a $200,000 escrow fund that will secure the promise of MEM to remove those items, essentially a bond. It's an escrow. And the funds are being placed into escrow as we speak and with the obligation pursuant to that court-endorsed agreement to build a $200,000 escrow, which will secure those obligations which I just mentioned. The court, the bankruptcy court wants, and the parties want, MEM wants, an orderly exit. The Mohawk and MEM can litigate and will litigate in bankruptcy court who owes what to whom for the landlord-tenant issues, which really aren't the concern of the city. I don't think that's why the city has called us here. I think it has to do with these other issues about, as I don't know if the city knew, but this orderly exit, and that it be done pursuant to the court's order.
I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. I know you're talking pretty much what's going on now, and I get that.
Yes.
I was here when we initially granted the special permit. That was back in 2018. And I don't believe, Mr. Engel, you were involved at that point. Am I correct? You weren't one of the directors with Middlesex at that time?
No. Only a lender to the company at that time. Only a lender to the licensee at that time.
Does anyone know if there are any original directors from that timeframe? Nancy Corey was the principal that spoke before this council, asking for a special permit.
Yeah. So, the court, the Superior Court in Suffolk County, granted me receivership.
Right.
And then not to interfere with the operation of the company, any of them. So, they have no say-so in anything at this point.
But your investment was in 2018, correct? Your $12 million investment was 2018?
Not all in that year, and it wasn't exactly 12. But that's when the investment began to start. And I wasn't a director or shareholder. I was only a secured lender.
I'm trying to determine how we got off what appeared to be a pretty good presentation by a company, you know, to open in Leominster. It was a good presentation. It looked like to be a solid company. There was a local owner of the building. There seemed to be some cooperation, and it didn't really take too long. I think $10,000 upfront. I'm not sure who can answer these questions. I guess it's my question, and I'm trying to find out what happened to us in the beginning here.
Well, I can answer on behalf of the receiver what I think is the question is how did things go wrong? And we believe things went wrong because contrary to the obligation of the lease to provide a watertight facility, to have a roof in good repair, exterior walls in good repair, the landlord never provided that. And there were leaks and notices to the landlord of leaks, crop damage, and it accrued and accrued, and it impacted, it basically destroyed the business and prevented the business from being profitable because so much of the crop had to be destroyed due to the bacterial and viral infestation from that leaking, which the receiver discovered when he was given authority to run the company. And there was testing, substantial testing done by a certified Massachusetts company that certified the massive extent of bacterial and viral infestation. The receiver then had to shut the facility down for months, do a deep clean, and restart the cannabis grow operation, which has left the company without revenue for over a year, unable to pay rent. If the facility had been provided, as the landlord was obligated to provide, it would not have leaked. It would have been successful, and there would not be a departure now of MEM from Leominster. And the landlord would have been paid the rent, and there wouldn't be a lawsuit. But it all stems from the landlord not having provided the facility that was promised.
So, you're saying back, and how long have you been involved with...
I think I, trying to remember, I think I've been involved on behalf of Mr. Engel since, I think it was January 2023.
When?
January, or maybe December of 2022, January 2023, right in there.
So...
But that was a prior incarnation when he, as he just mentioned, was simply a secured lender, hoping to be given his rights by the shareholders who controlled it, including Nancy Corey. And when that didn't happen and MEM was heading toward failure, he was able to have the court authorize him as the receiver to take over. And he's been trying and did try very hard to right the ship. And because of the problems that I just mentioned, he was not able to. And so now we have an agreement to leave.
So, it looks like to me that in 2020, the $10,000 was paid for the host agreement from, is that correct?
That I don't know. I don't know the history of that.
That was before you, so...
Yes. That was before me. I didn't know that.
All right. So, for our records, we have 2020, $10,000 was paid per the agreement of the host agreement. And then April 10th of '21, the first payment was made to our former city clerk, Caitlin There were also four other payments from April to August. So, there were a total of five payments in 2021 for $5,416.97, or a total of $27,084.85. So, for a company that had just opened a couple months ago, a couple of years prior to that, the payments just stopped. There were five payments made. Now, Mr. Engel, were you involved in the company at that point?
No.
No, you were not. Okay.
Well, just so the record's clear, he was a secured, he was a secured lender, but not, he was a secured lender but was not running the company.
Okay. So, I'm trying to figure out why the payments to the city stopped. And I understand you're saying because the building, the roof of the building failed and damaged the product.
Right.
But I don't know that that would stop your, it would make it right to stop paying the city for the agreement that you made with us.
Yes. I can't answer why the prior management chose to make the payments they made and stop making payments to the city.
So, you went to court in 2024?
2020, well, we've been to court a bunch of times, but we went...
I know. I'm trying, it's, I'm trying to keep track of, in a short time, trying to follow the...
Yeah. Well, the...
Chronological order here.
Yeah. It was October 2023 that we went to court, and the court granted receivership to David Engel.
So, without all the same directors of Middlesex, and it doesn't appear from what anybody is saying, that those same directors are the directors of Middlesex today. Is that a correct statement?
Well, I don't know what role they have in the company still, but as Mr. Engel said, they do not have an operational role because of the appointment of David Engel as receiver.
Right. So, you'd basically be in control of the property.
Yes.
My assumption is that without the same directors, there should have been a notification to the city of a change in management, a change in ownership, which is part of the agreement, the host agreement, and is also part of our ordinance. I've got a litany of ordinance violations. All right. I have a 105.58. Marijuana facilities shall provide the city police department and the building commissioner with the names, phone numbers, and email addresses of all management staff and key holders to whom one can provide notice if there are operating problems. Since David Engel is the court-appointed receiver for Middlesex as of October 2023, will work on better communication to keep the LPD updated. The police chief is here, and I think they had some issues as far as getting into the building and knowing exactly what the security is. I mean, I won't speak for him. We can ask him directly. But that's one violation. I'm just going to read the violations first. 105.61. A marijuana facility shall only be allowed by special permit from the city council in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 40A, Section 9, subject to the following statement regulations, conditions, and limitations. And the special permit was originally granted but has not been complied with. 105.6.4A. The facility is designed to minimize any adverse visual economic impacts on abutters and other parties to the interest as defined in General Law Chapter 40A, Section 11. Economical impact to the property owner. Each marijuana facility permitted under this ordinance shall, as the condition of its special permit, file an annual report and appear before the city council and the city clerk no later than January 31st, providing a copy of all current application, applicable state licenses for the facility, and/or its owners, and demonstrate continued compliance with the conditions of the special permit. That was 2018 that special permit was granted, and I have not seen one annual report for this company at all, from anybody. So, I understand that Mr. Engel wasn't there in the beginning. That's shame on them and those directors. But we haven't gotten anything since either on any type of a report. The designated contact person shall notify the police department, fire department, building commissioner, border health, and special permit granting authority. In Middlesex case, city council, in writing a minimum of 30 days prior to any change in ownership or management of a facility regulated under this section. We have not seen, I have not seen anything that indicates that there's been a change in management or a change in the contact person. 105.6.7. The permit holders shall enter into a host agreement with the city. The host agreement shall address any known and additional impact of the marijuana facility on the city's public safety and infrastructure, and any other stipulations deemed necessary by the mayor of the city, which may include a community impact, being in accordance with Chapter 94, G, Section 3. The host agreement shall be for an initial term of not more than five years, and we renegotiate at the conclusion of this initial term. So, I'm sure that's why we're looking at the host agreement that's going to be expiring. I won't go on on the rest of those, but I guess I'm, I understand things can happen, but it was very clear that changes in management, changes in ownership, changes in notifying the police department and the fire department, and I understand we had a fire there already, and the fire department had to react. And the report did say that it was a bulb that fell into a plant, I believe, and caused the problem.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Well, I wasn't there, but that's what I understand happened. I like to go into a place.
Now, when I tried to look back on trying to get some of this information, I came up with a number of different names that are associated with Middlesex, and I don't know if they're in the building or they're not. Fat Panda is one. And from what I understand from Mr. Bolak, there's more than one company operating. Are they operating under the Middlesex license?
Well, Middlesex Integrative Medicine is still operating. So, let me just go back. After the receiver was appointed in October of 2023, in February of 2024, February 12th, Mr. Engel, as the court-appointed receiver for MEM, sent a letter to Mayor Mazzarella regarding a number of things and identified himself as the receiver. We understood that to be the notification of the change in management that I think the city council was looking for. That was a letter sent to the mayor saying David Engel is the person in charge as a receiver. Then, he's done his best to fix the problems at every level. There have been a lot. And one of the things we did when we were contacted, I think it was by Mr. Bolak, at some point mid to late 2024, is we started to work through this list that you were reading to try to address it. And one of the things we addressed was to provide the current list of contact people, which was provided to Mr. Bolak at least by December 11, 2024, with the list of the various people who could be contacted at any time regarding the facility. And I can read that list if you'd like, but it basically had a main contact for the cultivation, a director of facilities, a security consultant, the CCC compliance administrator, and the receiver, with each with their email and telephone numbers. So, we understood that we had provided the contacts to the city. That was what we understood and believed. And it took a while. We understand that, and we apologize for that. We were not aware that some of this stuff had not been done until Mr. Bolak contacted us, us being the receiver.
At this point, before we get too lost and lose time, I'd like to hear from the fire chief and the police chief, if I could.
Should we sit back?
No, you can stay there. Both chiefs, if you want to just take, take one of the end seats up here.
Okay.
They won't be here either, and that way you can... Can you just give us a summary of what your take is on what's happening?
So, as far as the fire department with the, with the host agreement and everything, we have no dealings with that. Our dealings are with the building owner, Crowley Mohawk Drive Corp., because there's more than one company in there. It's subdivided up into about five different businesses. To my knowledge right, you know, now is the building is up to code. We have no issues. We did have a fire in the marijuana grow facility. State police came in and investigated it, and their determination was it was unintentional, accidental. It was a, possibly the light malfunctioned or a component of the light, grow light malfunctioned, and it dropped down onto the racks, the grow racks, which are made of plastic. And we had a fire that was a smoky fire and a little hard to access. What was happening at the time was they applied pesticides as part of their procedure, and the sign says, "Do not enter pesticides." So, we had to activate the state hazmat team, and, you know, we called in the state police investigators, which is normal. The pesticides were organic pesticides in... The pesticides were organic pesticides in nature. The signs are for, basically the work is, is once they apply it, is that you're not supposed to enter within a certain period of time, an hour, two hours. Like I said, they're organic pesticides, so their toxicity is not what we think of as regular, you know, chemical pesticides. The state hazmat team declared everything was good, that the building could be occupied again. After that, we went down with code enforcement, and we did a walkthrough a couple weeks ago, and the state cannabis commission was there. When the building facility was built back in 2018-ish, at the time, there was no cannabis regulation in the state fire code. So it was built to, by McKenzie Engineering, Peter Reynolds, he designed it. I met with Peter last week, and it was done under the building code, which he brought to my office for plans reviews, but it's not the type of plans that I would approve or disapprove. That would have been under the building inspector at the time. The code has stents changed where part of that falls under the fire regulation. So I did have, I was knowledgeable when it was being built. I worked with McKenzie Engineering. It was built to, you know, specs, and the building inspector signed off. We did an acceptance test. They do use some flammable gases down there, butane being one of them, but their quantities are small enough that they don't require permits. They buy it similar to us buying propane for our gas grills. Their quantities are at that, at the level that they don't need to be permitted, they just need to have safe practices. When we went down with the cannabis commission, they were exercising safe practices. As far as having not information, that is hugely important. So if they're not notifying the city or the fire or the police department, in times of emergency, that can mean the difference between someone getting injured. If we don't have access to the building, it would delay us in the fire operations. So I do applaud that the city council is having them for a hearing, because if the host agreement, you know, every business should allow us, give us their information contact, but the host agreement, you know, this specifies that they're supposed to notice who's running it, that they're licensed to do so and all that. And if that's not being done to the city, I am total support of the city council taking whatever action needed to make sure that that is done, even though they're in receivership and that they state that they want to exit. Well, that's still maybe six months away, so I would like that information.
The city ordinances as well as the host agreement. I mean, those were carefully crafted and, you know, meant to be followed for a reason. Thank you, chief. Chief Malinas?
From the law enforcement side, excuse me, the interactions were very limited. We respond there when the building alarm goes off for security purposes. And we noticed last year there was approximately, there was 11 alarms went off, and that's how many times let Mr. Police responded there. And each time we went there, we were unable to locate someone who could respond for an emergency from the building for one of the key holders, for example. So because this happened, we reached out, we spoke to someone who represented MEM, and we were able to get the updated list for the key holders, so just in case the alarm happened in the future, we were able to have someone to call after hours. And that was mostly the interaction that we had from the police side. And he was correct when he said that was updated. The notes I have says that was updated the end of December of last year.
All right. Thank you. I realize I did not have time to get to Mr. Crowley or Mr. Chason and members of my committee. Do you have anything you want to interject at this point, or will we wait till the next meeting for, to absorb all this and get? Just before I walked into the meeting tonight, I got a number of emails from the Cannabis Control Commission and did not have a chance to look at any of them for any of their inspections and what they found and some of the violations that they found, or as they say, their deficiencies, but as we know, their violation. Mr. Crowley, would you quickly want to have some comment, or do you want to wait till the next meeting? I'll leave that up to you.
If I could just have two quick minutes, I don't want to take up your time. I just want to respond to some of the allegations that were made regarding our failures as the building. That is a subject of litigation. I have a whole different story on that. And as far as notices go, the only reason they have any information at all is because I gave it to them, because in discovery. They don't know what happened. They don't pretend to know what happened. The roof leaks were caused by substandard work during fit-up. I notified them repeatedly. I still went down there and tried to help, kept notifying them that they needed to get their contractor back there to fix their problems. They stopped calling me for a period of time about leaks.
You had a number of tenants in that building when this started. Most of those tenants still in the building?
They've changed over the years, no, because actually Middlesex took over, when they first moved in, they took over 20,000 feet. Our building is 100. They had an option to expand. As people moved out, they took over the building to the extent that they had 80, over almost 80% of our building when Mr. Engel became receiver, and they were only occupying 20,000 feet. They never expanded. They claim it was my fault, but they never went for permits, they never went for design. They just didn't expand. They stopped paying rent, left the place empty. We went into bankruptcy because we had to, not because we chose to. We have a mortgage on the building. The mortgage was coming due. No bank in the world is going to give you a new mortgage when you're not collecting rent. The bank has been and continues to work with us through bankruptcy. It was not a choice to go to bankruptcy because we were trying to get away from Superior Court. We had to go to bankruptcy because we were running out of money. We are now litigating this. They gave back the empty space in December. As Mr. Carter agreed, there was a recent agreement with the courts. It's not a great agreement, but I can only take what I can take, and I can't continue to fight every day. As far as his bond goes, so to speak, there is an escrow deposit that is going in, that is there partially to ensure both the payment of rent while they're there for the next six months and for their timely removal of their product. Under no way, shape, or form am I agreeing that 200,000 is enough money. It was the number the lawyers agreed to, and it was the best we could get at the time. It was better than nothing. So that's all. I don't want to take up your time. I could go on for another three hours, and I won't. Thank you.
Mr. Chason, real quickly, I don't want to ignore you at all, and we are close on time, but I wanted to give you an opportunity. Now, you're a consultant for whom?
I'm a consultant for Apical and for MEM.
That's another player in the game. Is that part of the Engel? Mr. Engel, is that part of your?
I'm MEM. I'm a receiver for Middlesex Integrative Medicine.
Apical's a consultant.
So Fat Panda is with you?
No.
No, Fat Panda is not with you.
Fat Panda and Apical are a related party. They are the ones that are acting as a consultant to MEM for operational purposes. I'm a consultant on both sides, regulatory consultant, so I work with the Cannabis Control Commission. We've been on phone calls with them. That's my role in, with MEM and 25 Mohawk.
We haven't even touched on anything yet, so I'm going to, would you all be willing to return when we continue this hearing?
Yes, we need a date, of course, that hopefully can work for everybody. We have a lot of folks traveling.
All right. I will check with the clerk after this meeting. Our committee is going into executive session for a short period of time with the attorney, and then we will continue this hearing. We will not be coming back into session for this hearing, but we will talk with the clerk. We'll check with you for a compatible date, and we'll continue the rest. And I promise you, we will have more time to go through the whole meeting and get to a resolution one way or the other.
Sure, that's fine. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing possible litigation, as authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, and we're not reconvening.
We will not be returning for this session.
Can I just ask, does that executive session concern MEM?
I'm sorry?
Does that executive session concern MEM or a separate matter?
Yeah.
Does it concern Middlesex Integrative Medicine, or does it concern a separate matter? Let me ask it again. Does the executive session that was just referenced, does that concern Middlesex Integrative Medicine?
Yes.
Okay, well, can I just be heard regarding litigation?
It's up to you, Madam Chair. It's up to you.
For him to come in?
For him to speak now. No, he's not allowed into the session.
No, no.
I mean, if you're going to make a decision about litigation, I think it would behoove everybody to.
We will not be, I don't know if we'll make a decision tonight in executive session, you mean?
Yes.
No, I don't know. That's why we're going into executive session while we have our attorney here. But I would think not if we're going to have another hearing.
Okay, well, I.
But we're going to talk about our options in an executive session.
Thank you, and we'd like to be heard at the next hearing before a decision is made, because I think we have some relevant information. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight, and we will follow up on an acceptable meeting night.
Thank you very much.
So we're ready to go, sir?
Yes.
Thank you all.
I have a motion to go into executive session. Counselor, if you will, call. Counselor Robbins?
Yes.
All right, I will be before and adjourn. Thank you.
I have a motion to go into executive session. Counselor, if you will, call.
Yes.
Counselor Jones, yes.
Yes.
I will be before and adjourn.
I'm here with the other members of my, the Ways and Means Committee, to my left, Counselor Frank Arndinger, and to my right, Counselor David Cormier. We would like to welcome you, and if we can just go across the board and everyone can introduce themselves and we can get this started.
Rick Dondaro.
Rick Dondaro, Assistant Assessor.
Steve Spagnuolo, Assistant Assessor.
Rena Gagne, Chief Assessor.
Welcome, everyone. Mr. Spagnuolo, welcome, and I'm sure we're going to have some questions for you, but I would like to open it up to you, basically, to give us a little background information, where you're from, how long you've done this kind of work, and what you expect to get done, and what you look forward to in this career.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you all for having me, by the way. I appreciate the opportunity to serve Leamester. My skills, being a real estate appraiser for over 20 years, 22 to be exact, I've inspected quite a few properties throughout Massachusetts, including the local area, Leamester, Fitchburg, Worcester County, Middlesex, Hampton, Franklin Counties as well. Being a resident of Leamester for 20 years, you know, I know a few backroads and personal dealings with the schools that put both our kids through K through 12 in elementary and high school. And even just as a, you know, regular folk before, I was, you know, coming out here my whole life. My parents had friends out here, I always had friends out here. But, you know, as far as being in the assessor's field, I believe it's a natural progression of real estate appraising, where the properties, valuation, it's a connection between, you know, the taxpayer and the city hall, much like in, you know, in a mortgage, you want to live in a house, you get a mortgage. You know, I'm the eyes and ears of the mortgage company in those cases. We're now in the eyes and ears of the city, working for the taxpayers, so that we're guarding fairness, values equitable for everyone. And, you know, I do hope in two years to get designation through the Mass. Association of Assessing Officers and, you know, do the best of my ability and keep getting better.
On that, can you give us a little background of your education? And I know you said you've done this 20 years. Did you, how did you start out? Where'd you?
Well, in assessing, I've taken courses at the MAAO. It's the Course 200, which is like a second-level softball class. I did go into that cold without having any assessors' background. You know, and I do know, I do know a few assessors outside of the business as well, personally. So, you know, over the years, I've been probably thinking about assessing, you know, 15 years or more. And in the last two, I've done as much as I can personally to be prepared for an opportunity like this, to come out, to come my way, and, you know.
Okay.
Going to further that education. And as an appraiser, I've, like I said, I've appraised over 6,000 properties in the state of Massachusetts. I'm a certified residential appraiser. I've had that license since 2006, after my trainee's license, which I acquired in 2002.
Okay. And what about technology nowadays? We know everything is online, on computers. How are you with that, with the technology? Have you kept up with that?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I mean, the databases are more extensive and easy to, how can I say? You know, when you know what you're looking for, you can find inroads into making the information better, you know, perfecting the data sets and, you know, using it to your advantage. And I think that's what the technology is there for nowadays as well, is, you know, we're going to do a better job, you know, we expected to do it, you know, quicker at least, but, you know, garbage in, garbage out. You know, we want good information in our camera system for the valuations, and the way it gets manipulated, again, gives everyone a fair value, a fair shake at the value.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to members of my committee to see if they have any questions. Counselor Arndinger?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Spagnuolo, I have to say that, reading over your resume, I think you're very well qualified for this position, and I like how you set your goals ahead of time, you know, that you said, this is where I am, and I want to get there in two years. So I really appreciate that, and I really don't have any questions. You've got excellent references. You've got some high-powered people here with you today to back you up, so you're going to get my vote for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Arndinger. Counselor Cormier?
Thank you very much. Just welcome, and I do think that you are very well-suited. I'm very impressed with your resume. I would just ask, some of these certifications that your goal is to get, how's that, how are some of these certifications, how might they differ from what you've done previously to what you need to do going forward?
Sure. It's going to be assessment administration mostly, the basic principles of evaluation. I feel as I've had that for two decades or more, more or less learning the ins and outs of, you know, the inner workings of offices and. Sure. It's going to be assessment administration mostly, the basic principles of evaluation, I feel as I've had that for two decades or more. More or less learning the ins and outs of, you know, the inner workings of offices and, you know, budgets and the paperwork involved. But, you know, again, I have good help, both in and out of City Hall. You know, I have a list of other assessors that I can call on if I ever had any other questions for, you know, for any technical ability, speaking of that. You know, taking more classes is my goal.
Good.
You know, and I think I'm only, just as being an appraiser, a lot of the classes count for that, but I think I'm three or four classes away from getting that designation.
Okay, good.
Well within time.
Perfect. I don't have any other questions, I just, I look forward to your, to your confirmation. And once again, you know, I wish you, I wish you all the best if you are, if you're confirmed. I think you have a great resume and look forward to working with you if confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the City Council have any questions, comments? Counselor Farida?
I don't really have any questions. Steve and I go back away, we're fellow appraisers, and I've known Steve for a long time, and I have a lot of respect for him, think he'd be a great addition to the team. So, you know, I highly speak in support of Steve's appointment tonight.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Spagnuolo, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure meeting you, getting to know you a little bit. If you want to stay around, we will be voting on this a little bit later on, on the agenda. We'd ask you to wait, we'll see if we can bump this up a little bit if the President will give me a little leeway earlier, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, excuse me, the next item is our public hearing at 6:20. Counselor Angelini is the chairperson, Ward 5 Counselor, Chairperson of Legal Affairs, could not be here this evening as a result of a medical procedure he had earlier today. I know he did a lot of work on this, this is a, the FEMA update, we're talking about an ordinance update, FEMA panel or MAP updates. All of those have been approved by Katie Pate, who's a DCR representative that works directly with FEMA, as well as our City Solicitor's Office, as well as our Planning Board. The second member of our Legal Affairs Committee is Counselor Tossi, Ward 1 Counselor, and the third member is Counselor Pauline Cormier, Ward 2. So Counselor Tossi, you're going to pinch it for Counselor Angelini this evening and take off 29-25.
Yes, sir. All right. Good evening. This is a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee. My name is Bob Tossi, and I'm joined by Pauline Cormier, Ward 2, City Counselor, and the petition we're talking about is 29-25. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the Flood Plain. Federally mandated update to the Flood Plain District EP, Article 6, Section 2234. So I think, Mr. President, we, I think we got the ordinance created.
Yeah, well, I think the, like I, as I indicated, the City Solicitor has approved the form of the ordinance.
And the Planning Board.
Importantly, Ms. Pate, Ms. Pate, Katie Pate, for DCR, so we should be in good shape with that.
Okay, so...
Want to check with your committee member?
Sure. Pauline, any questions or any concerns?
No, I think we could, we should just open this up to the public and see if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of or opposed.
Or maybe first the counsel, the counselors, that have any questions.
Counsel, any questions? No questions, so again, I'll open it up to the public. If there's anyone who would look to speak in favor of or against petition 29-25, please come to the podium for a second time. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak on behalf or opposed to 29-25, and for a third and final time, anybody that'd like to speak in favor of or opposed to 29-25. Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we close the public meeting.
I would agree.
All right, so the public hearing on 29-25 is closed, we can move on to 24-25. I do think Counselor Bovensy is here someplace, if I'm not mistaken, if you want to join us, and the petitioner. And if you'd like to read that, Mr. Chairman, into the record.
Sure. Public hearing, petition 24-25. Thomas Bovensy, on behalf of Steve Boucher, requests to amend the zoning district map for Apostle 352-6, such that the entire apostle would be zoned residence B, since a portion is currently zoned industrial. Okay, so we had a Planning Board, 7-0 approval here. Pauline, would you have any questions concerning this?
I'm sure that Counselor Bovensy's going to enlighten us all about this.
All right.
Yes.
So this has been on the agenda a little bit, and it may have been continued a couple times, so I'm not sure if the counselors had a copy of a sketch that shows the property in question.
Thank you very much.
And I'll have it passed out with the President's permission.
Thank you.
So the, the property is located on the corner of June Street and Viscolloyd Ave., and it was formerly an industrial building. Mr. Boucher purchased that site recently and is in the process of raising the building and then complying with various environmental matters. The property had various tax liens on it, those have all been paid off, and it had other liens relative to previous work that the city had done on it, and those have all been paid off. The final asbestos is being removed at this time, and once that is completed, all the buildings, it's a large building that's formerly industrial on that property, will be raised and the property leveled and cleaned. It is the, my client's intention to build residential on that site. And you'll notice from the handout that a large portion of the site, or about a third of the site, is currently zoned residential, and that's on the portion of the street that abuts Longwood Avenue. What is shown in the hash marks on this are what we're proposing to be rezoned from industrial to residential. So it kind of harmonizes the zones a little bit better in that district, and you'll see on the highlighted district, all the dark notations on that, those are all residential currently. So the balance of June Street is residential, Longwood Avenue behind that is residential, and moving your way to it, Lancaster Street is all residential. So there's houses in that area all residential, and that's what my client would intend to do, by having the entire site zoned residential. The building hadn't been used for a number of years, industrial, they were cleaning up the site, they think it's a good use, and the rezoning makes a lot of sense. We were in front of planning, and as a member, Tossi pointed out, so they unanimously recommended or made a determination that it's appropriate for rezoning that we're recressing here tonight. With that, is there any questions?
Attorney Bovensy, the, this is part of the building, just so I have it clear in my mind, that is already collapsed. Was there a portion that had caved in or something at one point?
There was a portion that had caved in, but what you saw that's been removed, it was the, was a lot of the asbestos roofing.
Okay.
So they pulled a permit, they had to get an environmental permit from DEP, and it took some time, but they've removed all the asbestos from the site.
Okay. And how long would you expect this kind of, a project of this sort to take?
To raise the building?
Yes.
Probably a couple weeks because there's a lot of sorting there. So when we actually get on-site, it'll probably be two, two and a half weeks.
Okay.
From start to finish.
And, and the residential units that you're looking at, can you give us an idea of what you're looking to do?
We really, we're still in engineering with that, and we haven't really determined what, what to do there, yet.
Okay. And just to clarify, and I know the people that are in the audience can't see it, but we can see it, so this is, the overwhelming majority of this neighborhood already is already residential.
That's correct.
Right, yeah.
And the likelihood that any, any industrial is going to go into that property is...
It's, it's kind of too small of a site, and we did look at the building to maybe rehab it, and it's just, it's too far beyond its life.
Okay, okay. Counselor Tossi, I don't have any further questions?
No, neither do I. Any of the other counselors want to chime in? Okay.
Public? Public?
Yep, public. Any, anybody in the public that would like to comment on 24-25 once? Anybody would like to comment 24-25 twice? And for the final time, would anybody like to comment on 24-25?
Unless the petitioner has any other questions, I think we can close that one.
Okay, we'll, we'll close.
Thank you, Mr. President, councilmember. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Right on time, public hearing for 6:45. I will mention that I did check with the city clerk, and we are missing one of the referrals on 35-25. Counselor Tossi, the building inspector has not yet weighed in with his referral. We do have the referral back from the Planning Board with a six-to-one recommendation, so it's your pleasure with, can you read the first into the record and then tell us what your pleasure is?
Sure. This is petition 35-25. Kenneth Delgado, 8 Highland Street, Lancaster, Mass. Requests to amend the current lot width under zoning district RB for two-family dwellings. The amendment would consist of changing the minimum required width from 80 feet to 50 feet for a two-family dwelling. The current frontage requirement for two-family dwellings in the RB is 50 feet and 80 feet. Lot width required would create pork chop lots, which the city does not favor. Lot configuration would be rectangular and consistent if both the frontage and lot width were equal. Reference 1420, 1426, 1428, 1432, Central Street, Lemonster, Mass. There's an attached map with voters listed.
You have a recommendation on this one, given the missing referral?
Yes, I would request further time, please.
All right. I'll check with your committee member, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I'm in agreement with further time.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I just have one procedural question through the chair to the clerk, actually. It says that 10 registered voters' signatures are needed, but on the registered voter page, one of them says not in Lemonster. Does this petition still have the required 10 registered voters it needs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Robbins. Anybody else? So I see, I imagine you're going to, when this comes up on the agenda, you're going to ask for a continued public hearing as well?
Yes.
All right. Fine. I guess unless anybody has anything else, we've got five minutes to the, the public forum, which we'll take up at 6:55. Speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. We have some people that have signed up. The first person is Amy Cookta, if I have that correctly?
Pretty good.
Tried.
Thank you, it's not an easy name. Hello, my name is Amy Cookta, I live at 18 Page Ave. in Lemonster. I actually have a short prepared statement that I'm going to read on behalf of my mother-in-law, Mary Gleason. Mary Gleason lives at 125th Ave. in Lemonster. This is in regards to the matter 45-25 about horse racing. So I'm going to read Mrs. Gleason's statement. I strongly oppose the horse racing entertainment facility that is proposed to be built on the cap landfill off Mechanic Street. I've been a Lemonster resident for over 45 years, where my husband and I built our home and raised our two sons. It's been a wonderful place to live, but I'm deeply concerned about the potential negative impact that horse racing projects will have on our community, especially disturbing the landfill. The landfill poses significant health risks, releasing harmful deadly chemicals into the environment. I've witnessed the deadly effects of dangerous chemicals firsthand. My husband was exposed to Agent Orange during his service in Vietnam and was diagnosed with bone marrow cancer. He fought so hard to overcome his illness, but in the end, it took his life. The chemicals in the cap landfill include Class 2B carcinogens, which have been linked to leukemia and other blood-based cancers. I end with asking each and every council member on this board, if this was proposed in your neighborhoods, would you be voting yes for horse racing in this proposal? I urge you to consider the potential health risks to our environment, our residents, and the liability for the city, and do everything within your power to stop this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Larry Williams.
Good evening, I'm Larry Williams, I'm from 41 Leland Avenue. I'm here to talk about the same topic, the horse racing. I served in the United States Air Force for 21 years, and I've lived all over the world. I've lived in the United States in different locations. The last 20 years, I've lived here in Lemonster, and I consider it a very thriving community. I've raised a family and children, I love this community, I love it the way it is. I think bringing horse racing and gambling here will change the dynamics dramatically, and I think it's a bad idea. I don't have a statement as the person for me did, but I can tell you that that is my feeling, and I don't think I'm the only one that feels that way.
Next is Lisa Nugent.
I don't have a paper, God, this is going to be so hard. This doesn't get any easier, I'll tell you. As you said, Lisa Nugent, while the City Council is not voting tonight on Bay State Racing's host community agreement, I'm hoping that the City Council can help to keep them from putting the cart before the horse, so to speak, and ensure that the minimum of the following takes place prior to signing, the signing of the HCA. Bay State to disclose all parties involved, who are the affiliates, who comprises Bay State Racing. Have them disclose where the project funds are coming from and that they're verifiable. Require that a mass certificate of good standing be provided. Require that a proper site assessment, hydrology study, and compression test be conducted. Require that all necessary approvals from DEP, EPA, and Conservation are taken care of. And require that any racing oversight board appointee for the city to be approved by the City Council, and mandate that the appointee be a person without invested interest in the fairgrounds or any horses. I also wanted to briefly discuss petition 4125. I know that it was submitted for legal to review, excuse me, to confirm that Lemonster has the legal right to prohibit horse and dog racing and any associated betting and wagering on the skills and speed of the animals anywhere in Lemonster. It's worth noting that Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 128, Section 3L states, "No license shall be issued to permit horse or dog racing meetings to be held on premises owned by the Commonwealth or any political subdivision thereof." That would be Lemonster, and that land is owned by the city. So currently, right now, the laws prohibit that from happening. If the state prohibits racing on city-owned land, then it stands to reason that Lemonster could legally choose to prohibit racing in Lemonster. Also of note, the petition only calls for prohibiting wagering on animals racing in the city of Lemonster. I'm hoping that the City Council will vote in favor of petition 4125. Not only would doing so take care of the current proposal, but would insulate Lemonster against similar future proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. Folks, we have to open a meeting by law at 7 o'clock, which we're going to do right now, and then we'll recess, and we'll take further public forum comments once we're recessed, so if you'd please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
And I'll take attendance of the councilors in here this evening. Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Thomas Arndinger.
Present.
Councilor Tossi.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Robbins.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
And I shall be recorded as president. We have eight members in attendance this evening. Does the chairwoman of records have a report?
Mr. President, I'm going to ask, request for more time on the minutes. We've had a couple of requests from councilors that have come in to make some adjustments, so.
Very well.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion to go into recess. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr second, and Councilor Robbins. All those in favor, please recognize usual manner. We are in recess, and we're next up with comments from Caitlin Smith.
Good evening. Very nervous this time. Caitlin Smith, 194 Prospect Street. I want to start with the fact that Bay State Racing spent $360,000 on lobbyists in 2024. Bay State has presented a host community agreement that very confidently asserts their intention to change state law in order to acquire for 99 years and $1 a toxic landfill for their project. Bay State Racing's principal, Sagi Gangar, was fined in 2009 by the SEC for fraudulently inflating revenue to deceive investors and was banned for five years from acting as an officer or director. Bay State investor Richard Fields has sued and been sued so many times by business associates that I do not have time to tell you about it. In 2007, he spent $200,000 in a lobbying attempt to influence New York gaming law, and he has tried and failed to build a Racino at least three times. The mayor would be required, under the HCA, to instruct the city council to petition the legislature for a change of state law to allow the Fairgrounds project to be constructed on lands protected by Article 97. Article 97, also called the Open Space Act, prevents protected lands from use for other purposes. In 2024, Senator John Cronin received almost $6,000 in official campaign contributions from Bay State's affiliates and lobbyists, over three times what they contributed in any previous year. $4,550 of those dollars were received on one day, April 16, 2024, from Richard Fields, Sagi Gangar, Bay State attorney John Stephanini, and two other Bay State lobbyists. It isn't a coincidence that Bay State tripled their campaign contributions to Senator Cronin when it became obvious that they would need an ally in the state legislature to acquire protected public lands. This HCA, with its enormous environmental and public safety impact on the unstable landfill, is what the deed restriction and Article 97 are protecting the land against. I am obviously opposed to it, and I urge you, when the time comes, to vote no on Bay State's host community agreement and any further proposal put forth by Bay State Racing or involving the landfill. I have sources, if any members of the city council would like them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Nadine Anderson?
Hello. My name is Nadine Anderson. I also live at 194 Prospect Street, and I also oppose this development because of the multiple hazards it poses to public health. The site is uniquely unsuitable for the proposed development. The area retains hydrologic connections to the Nashua River. It lacks a bottom liner, and it hosts nearly a century's worth of hazardous waste generated during Leominster's heyday as a plastics manufacturing hub. During a site inspection in 1982, the EPA characterized the landfill as toxic, hazardous, and uncontrolled. Even after the landfill was capped in 1996, this history of pollution is still evident today. Just last year, dangerously high levels of the carcinogen benzene were detected in the groundwater samples extracted from the landfill. Construction of a racetrack on this site jeopardizes the containment of these carcinogens and risks broader pollution of the Nashua River. This project is barely about a racetrack, though. It is primarily a gambling venture. Mobile wagering revenue represents between 70% to 90% of Bay State's income stream, and developing a racetrack is simply the cheapest path to securing the necessary license to access this revenue. Online wagering companies seek out retail partnerships with places like the Fairgrounds to capture local markets and increase gambling rates therein. Increased gambling rates are associated with increased rates of bankruptcy, divorce, crime, and suicide. We are being asked to risk profound environmental harm in exchange for an empty field subsidized by the financial ruin of our neighbors. This is a bad bet for Leominster, and I urge the council to vote against any proposal advanced by the Fairgrounds and Bay State. Thank you.
Next is Rosemary Kerosus.
Hello, I'm Rosemary Kerosus, and I live at 7 Southers Crossing in Leominster. Again, I spoke last time. I am a nurse practitioner. I live and work in town. I'm also, I have a public health background. And I really just want to address again the concerns I have about gambling in our town. And to go forward on a gambling facility, it really does, to say that we would support that, it would be giving access, availability, and acceptability of gambling in Leominster. And there's been multiple studies, especially one from the American Medical Association. They noted that gambling doesn't just affect the gambler, but it affects six other people for every one gambler who's affected. And the majority of harm comes from people who do not gamble with problem, like do not have problem gambling. They are infrequent gamblers. So again, I'm against gambling for Leominster. I don't think it's a good choice. Specifically about the proposal on our landfill, when I looked at the information that comes from the proponents, it sounds like they would be putting about 700 cars on top of the landfill. So if an average car weighs 4,000 pounds, that would be 2.8 million pounds. So it's about 1,400 tons on top of a landfill that has a cap from 30 years ago and no liner. So to me, that's just, you know, looking at that, I don't think that would be a good choice for our city as well. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Peter Latchis.
I'm getting older, I'm gonna walk down.
That's all right. Take your time. You know the way.
Yeah. I've been involved in a while.
My name is Peter Latchis, 22 Demasa Drive. I live in back of the hospital, and I've been involved in several things on Mechanic Street that we're glad we got rid of. One was they were trying to, well, they would put a school together, and it was gonna open, but a number of people went and said that they didn't want to close. They didn't trust the landfill. And luckily, the school committee closed it down, thank God. Another time, somebody wanted to rezone on Mechanic Street for a commercial property, trying to rezone his property, and the opponents on Mechanic Street largely turned it down, and it was finally overturned, and the city protected the people that lived there. Now Mechanic Street, now we got a racetrack going here. Mechanic Street's a very populous street, and I would think, the city would think, to protect the roadways and make sure that we have a safe city where we can drive safely back and forth. Mechanic has been here for years. It's one of the main streets, and I think when I look at racing, I live in Demasa Drive, so I'm, my point is, I don't live there, but I just am against it. I went to Suffolk Downs on the last final days, and I didn't enjoy, I never enjoyed gambling on racing, but I went, it was dirty. The people there, they looked like they were lucky if they had a dollar, a lot of them. I think it's bad for people, because like, a lot of people brought up gambling. It's an addiction. No, it doesn't affect a lot. It doesn't affect, well, I should say, it does affect a lot of people, and some is real serious, where they lose their houses and their jobs and marriage. As far as the landfill, I look at it this way. I try to look at the project, and I see a large amount of people. I get the sign up in my ad, and a lot of people have contacted me. I get calls from Sterling and Lunenburg about it, and I couldn't believe it. I didn't know about it, and they told me it's on a landfill. I said, "What, are you crazy? That's, I don't think you're right." Yeah, it is. It is on a landfill. And some, it's interesting what people say. They said, "Well, you know, I really don't care, because I don't live there, but if I live there," they said, "Yeah, I vote it down." So you gotta look at the people that are actually gonna be affected. It's very important that we listen to the people that are mostly affected in this area, and I hope too that we turn it down, because I just think it's a lot of animal abuse. I thought racetracking was done. I didn't know it's still legal. And I just hope that the city council evaluates where it is, who is affected, and vote the right way, because we certainly don't need a racetrack in the middle of town with people drinking and, you know, in that area. It's getting bigger and larger and all the time, and Mechanic Street's always a target to put stuff in, and we gotta think about how are we gonna plan for the future? So I hope we keep future, Leominster in the future and protect how they travel and the traffic designs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Next is Michael Caputo.
Hi, I'm Michael Caputo, 22 First Avenue. I want to speak out against the proposed fairgrounds as well, for many of the reasons others residents have put forth already. The first one is we're proposing to put a massive structure, and someone said thousands and thousands of pounds of weight, and people, and structures on top of a very fragile cesspool of chemicals and toxic waste. There have been measures that have been taken to mitigate the threats from this toxic waste and chemicals. Someone even argued that the measures taken aren't even sufficient as is today. So we have to do everything we can to protect the spread of those chemicals from the rest of the community, and building structures and having human activity right directly on top of them does not help mitigate that threat. The second element is traffic. So we actually already have a racetrack on Mechanic Street. You just have to stand outside and look at it. Cars fly up and down all day long, day and night. It's a very busy area. If you look at the proposed plans, yes, there's a main, the entrance is supposed to be as you head towards Route 190, but there's also an exit way. We know there will be drunk people flying up and down the roads. There's a lot of residents live directly on Mechanic Street. A lot of children live directly on Mechanic Street, so it's a safety and health hazard in that respect as well. So for the proposed revenues to the city, somebody mentioned that Leominster's a thriving community, and I totally agree. Leominster is growing. You can see, I've been here for about 10 years. The property values here have about doubled in 10 years. I don't recall our property taxes going down that time. So we've doubled our revenue from property tax. We don't need this money from the racetrack. Finally, these taxes are taxed our most vulnerable. The gentleman that just spoke before mentioned how, when he was at Suffolk Downs, a lot of the patrons looked like they didn't have two nickels rubbed together. Generally, people that fall victim to gambling, yes, can happen to anybody, but, you know, it's the only hobby you can lose your entire life savings in an afternoon. And we don't need this kind of disruption and preying our most vulnerable residents as well. So I think there are better uses we could have for the land. I think that focusing on protecting our community from the chemicals that are underneath the cap should be of paramount importance, and Leominster's a growing city. We don't need this. It would be a step backwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputo. Mr. Caputo was the last signed-up party, but we're open to comments on people who did not sign the list. Is there any member of the public who did not sign up? Please approach the rostrum. Identify yourself by your name and address, and you can make your comment.
Hi, I'm Christina Marama, 549 Mechanic Street. This proposed racetrack is directly across the street from my house. I can't imagine what's gonna be turned up, what happens years from now when cancer, all kinds of health problems go on. Who's gonna cover that? You know? If it was one of your loved ones, and, you know, something of that sort kinda happens, I mean, I have a 13-year-old boy who we've, he grew up here, and I don't want to have to move and take him away from everything that he's grown accustomed to here, school and friends, family. And this is just not a good idea. I mean, you got bus stops up and down that street. I've had three vehicles go through my front yard, which I have boulders in front of my front yard now. One vehicle that went through the front yard literally was this far from my front steps. It's a slight curve, and people don't pay attention. I have a police report on one of them, where it blew through my front yard and threw my, our flagpole into the neighbor's yard, but they were going so fast. So to bring in the gambling, the drinking, it's just not a good thing to do, and I am completely against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marama. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to comment on an agenda item this evening?
Melissa Bible, 178 Fifth Street, here to talk about the same topic and was happy to see the host agreement provided for all of us when we came in. Leominster decided years ago that our farming, agriculture in the community was not part of our future. This is evident in the closure of the barn program and purposeful development of our technology programs at the high school. It's comical to think that a program that has folding stalls six days a week for horse is gonna educate our kids on the equine program in our classrooms as a proposal. Since the Fairgrounds' host agreement was placed in advance of tonight's meeting, as a member of the school committee, I question the addition of the equine in the classroom program. What's the mass curriculum framework? Who was coordinated with? Who planned this? I was here a number of years ago to discuss my traffic concerns on Mechanic Street and the proposed zoning changes to a commercial property from residential to commercial. I was concerned about traffic then. As someone said, "We don't need a racetrack built. We already have a racetrack on Mechanic Street." Lastly, we have to review the health and environmental concerns this project brings, from increased traffic, speeding, carbon emissions, methane measurements, carcinogen exposure. No one on this committee should want this in their backyard. Do not target a low-income community, the lowest-income ward in the city. Do not expose our neighborhood that is forced to tolerate the wastewater treatment plant in the summer to the noise, smell, and health exposure this project brings. If you feel so strongly about this project, please put it in your backyard.
Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the city council on the public forum?
Hi, my name is Laurie Salafia. I live at 837 Lancaster Street, and I've lived in Leominster all my life. I am against the racetrack as well, and, you know, during the time that we were cleaning out the Nashua River, I lived in North Leominster, and I remember the smells that came from that, and all of the, you know, health issues that came with those, that cleanup. And it took years and years for that to happen, and I hate to see that happen again, as much of that runoff would go and re-pollute our Nashua River that is, has taken so long to keep clean. So I hope that you'll vote no.
Thank you, Ms. Salafia. And again, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council on the public forum this evening? You're on deck.
All right. Jase Connor, 147 Johnny Appleseed Lane. I usually prefer to shoot from the hip, but on the I usually prefer to shoot from the hip, but on the advice of my wife, I had to write something down. So you've all heard at this point the wide range of concerns, horse racing, environmental contamination, traffic and safety, gambling and addiction risks, increased crime, property values, to name a few. But what I also find alarming is, number one, the majority of these issues and risks are created by the developer's proposal itself. In my opinion, an effective development and economic business model should solve more problems than it creates. This proposal simply isn't one of them. Number two, of the pre-existing and well-known issues that everybody talks about, the landfill and traffic mitigation is an example, I find it concerning how those risks are being framed as things the developer will fix if you just sign on the dotted line. To me, that's backwards. These aren't problems for a private company to solve on its terms. The responsibilities for you, our public officials, to address through independent review and transparent, community-first planning. From the start, this process has been confusing, rushed, and frankly suspicious. I had a pun for cart before the horse, but Lisa used it. You know, it's full of vague promises, looking at the HCA, a lot of "we will coordinate" language, a lot of, you know, "we will this, we will that" post-agreement. In other words, no upfront, independent validation. So now the HCA, we also see the workaround for how this project would even be possible. Get the mayor to ask the state to change the law so gambling can happen on public land. I'd like to emphasize a common feeling, that's not community planning, that's backdoor dealing. I'd like you to ask yourself this question. If a project is truly family-friendly and good for the community, as the fairgrounds' latest marketing efforts like to spin, why does it require a legislative loophole to exist? I urge you to do the right thing when it comes to this vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Delano, 117 Abbott. I'll be very quick. I have two points. One is, as a family law attorney, I've dealt with a lot of family issues, a lot of financial issues and gambling. Never runs well. Always tragic consequences. It hurts families and it hurts children. The other point I want to make is, if you look at the fairgrounds' website, they have, like, economic study, they have some other thing about case studies of successful landfill revitalizations. And every single one of those examples they pulled together to promote this was creating open spaces, parks, athletic fields, scenic overlooks. If they had an example like this, they would have put it on there, I'm sure. This is unprecedented for a reason. It's a bad idea.
Thank you, Mr. Delano. Again, is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the city council on our public forum this evening?
Hello, my name is Josh Natali. I live at 96 By Centennial Avenue. I don't have a wife, so I am going to shoot from the hip. I've seen a lot of gambling commercials lately and they always start with something like, "If you sign up for our gambling thing, we'll give you $200 free." And I just saw the newest ad for the fairgrounds and it was like, "We're going to give Lemmister $1 million for nothing." And that just sounds really familiar to me and it's just the same trick that they use to hook people. They're trying to hook our city. If, they're telling us that they're going to make Lemmister more prosperous by doing this, but the way to make Lemmister more prosperous is what Lemmister has been doing. You encourage people to work hard, you create a safe environment where people can work and build wealth slowly and steadily with hard work. And that's the same thing we have to do. They're trying to convince people to follow this get-rich-quick scheme of, you know, bet on a horse and you could make it big. And I think they're just trying to do the same thing with our cities, just say, "You don't need to encourage people to work hard. Just take this one deal and we'll make Lemmister prosperous all by ourselves." And I think, just like it's a scam when you see it on TV, it's a scam here.
Thank you, sir. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council?
Good evening. Mike Farnsworth, I live at 645 Mechanic Street, Red Cross from the proposed landfill, or the project. I'm here today because I do not think the host community agreement that Bay State Racing LLC has put forward is a wise financial decision for the city of Lemmister. On page three of the HCA PDF, in what is officially page one under recitals, it states, "Whereas the parties anticipate that as a result of the facility's operation, the city will incur additional expenses and impacts on the city's roads and other infrastructure systems, law enforcement, fire protection services, inspectional services, permitting and consulting services, as well as unforeseen impacts, both quantifiable and unquantifiable." So Bay State here is acknowledging that this is not an income stream that comes to our city without its, quote, "expenses and impacts, both quantifiable and unquantifiable." To make up for the additional expenses, the HCA states several areas where payments will be made to the city. These payments come with contingencies such as performance-based payments, language around being fully operational, and reimbursements, which leave the city in a vulnerable spot having to front money. I don't believe that this will improve Lemmister's economy as much as we're being led to believe, especially when you consider the above point of incurring additional expenses to gain potential revenue. There's also an impact that many people have pointed out on the people of our community. As the famous Warren Buffett said, quote, "I find it socially revolting when a government preys on its citizens rather than serving them. A government shouldn't make it easy for people to take their checks and waste them." Don't forget that there are people and families that will be impacted by introducing gambling to our city. Gambling is rising at an alarming rate and leaves behind a devastating wake. I believe that there are better ways for the city of Lemmister to prosper, ones which are moral and ethical. I'm opposed to the fairgrounds' project and I ask that you vote against their HCA when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council for this evening?
Hello, I'm Caitlin Blake. I live in Lemmister, 19 Wood-
Could you have your address, please?
I was getting there. 19 Woodside Avenue. And what I would like to talk about is how this will directly affect Go Farm, which is right down the street. I work at Growing Places, which is a nonprofit in Lemmister, and we buy from Go Farm. A lot of our customers are lower-income individuals as well as that live right around this project. And if carcinogenics is a risk, like many people that have talked before me have brought up, then this is going to directly affect the food that these individuals will be eating. So I believe that we should also take into account the effects of this project on our agricultural stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you. And is there another member of the public that wishes to address us this evening? And for a second time, any member of the public that wishes to address us?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ralph Case. I live at 185 Walnut Street and I've been in other parts of the city growing up. I am an educator. I have been in the Lemmister school system for 35 years. I've gotten to have many of you as my students. I'm very proud of you. You have grown. You're taking a position in government at this particular time in your life. You are taking on input from all of us with different issues. And I'm very pleased with all of you speaking and standing tall, just as we've always thought we could do that. We're doing it! And I'd just like to encourage you to digest this information you've received this evening and process it by talking with each other, talking with us, sending out information so that we have clear steps to move ahead. And we all know the type of things that go on with alcohol and gambling. And we just do not want to expose family members, friends, and others to this difficult time in their life to hang out with that kind of activity. So finishing, just do your job.
Thank you, Coach. I still have my seventh grade lessons upper in mind. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address us this evening? Second time, any member of the public that wishes to address us? And a third and final, oh?
Hi, Phil Valeri, 639 Mechanic Street. I just wanted to share a vignette on traffic. I think late 80s, early 90s, my aunt and uncle and their two kids were in a near-death accident driving down the street from Go's. And my cousin flew about 20, 30 feet. And they were hospitalized. Everyone survived. But I just wanted to say, there are real stories of people who almost died on that street from reckless drivers up and down. And I think it's really rich and ridiculous that a 5,000-plus-person venue proposed would have only one access point for the public. I've been to Xfinity Center a couple times and it is absolute madhouse to get out of that venue because there's only one exit. So I just would like to say, I strongly, strongly doubt that there will be one exit from this venue. And I think anyone who believes it, it's a load of bullocks. I, that's the end of my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Valeri. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address us?
Steve Tursch, 40 South Cotton Street. I want to remember the city council, remember? My grandfather used to bring me to the dump in the late 60s, early 70s. I used to look at, "Grand, we're going way up there in the road?" Yes. Remember? We used to be the plastic city, the whole country area. A lot of stuff got dumped in there. Gallohs, cardboard boxes, plastic, 50-gallon drums, other people's trash. Something's going to happen. If you let this go through, they hit something the wrong way, you have a disaster that's going to happen. You get a river right there. Everything's going to go right, go down in a river. Because I remember, I worked for a fuel company when they were drilling the wells, I brought the fuel, bringing the wells for the methane gas. I brought the fuel. When they're drilling the pipelines, they go underneath mechanical extension, so you burn methane gas there. I don't think this is a very, very good idea. The best thing to dump is just leave it alone. Let the sheep have it. They had a blast over there. Everybody complained about it. I like seeing the sheep over there. Please, do not allow this through because something will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tursch. Okay, would anyone else like to address us this evening? Second time, any member of the public that wishes to address us this evening? And a third and final time? Okay, before I close it out, we did receive a-
Okay.
You couldn't do it on the first or second call? You had to think about it?
I really did.
Okay.
Hi, friends. My name is Robin Dowling. I live on Fifth Avenue. I appreciate everybody's comments and information and I appreciate the time that you're giving the public to speak about this. I really do. Thank you. I have random thoughts here, go figure. I used to be an EPA paralegal in DC and I used to work a lot, well, on behalf of DuPont, Bechtel, some of the big, huge aircraft manufacturers up in upstate New York, down in Biloxi, Mississippi, blah, blah, blah. Aaron Brockovich, not me, but Aaron Brockovich, know better, do better. This is where we are. I'm just going to leave it with that. They've all said things with a lot more factual information. We can do our homework. I think in our gut, many of us may feel this is just not a good idea. Traffic resolution, don't rely on, my feelings are, don't rely on a developer or anybody else to take care of the situation that the city should be taking care of. Because then you're in bed with relying on another party to take care of and to cure it all and to come up with the solutions and then it becomes a side issue. Take care of the things that you need to take care of as a city. Don't look for the shiny, quick fixes that a developer can promise. I met with our pest control guy today who does our quarterly pest control and he said, "Oh, yeah, I heard there's a proposal going up in the city." And I said, "Yeah." And he said, "Wow." He said, "That's going to keep us pretty busy with all the rats." And I said, "Yeah, what do you mean?" And he said, "Well," he said, "with the floods, I remember we were pretty busy. You know, the rats come up, that's what happens. Down by Whitney, when you do construction, it stirs up the rats, that's what happens." I said, "Well, my son had pet rats. They're pretty cute, but city rats are a bit different." And he said, "Yes, the construction, have they, you know, have you guys thought about it?" And I said, "Well, I didn't even really think about that." And he said, "Where's the site going to be?" And I said, "Come out the end of our driveway. It's right down the street." And he saw, he said, "That open field?" I said, "Yeah." He said, "Isn't that a landfill?" I said, "Yeah." And he said, "Wow." He said, "Rats, landfill?" He said, "He's going to be very busy sadly." And I'm not trying to push fear or anything and I don't have facts to back it up. This was just a conversation this afternoon that surprised me. And it wasn't even on my radar. And he said, "And the fact that it's a horse racing facility or an equine facility, it's just a natural rat pest draw anyway because of the hay, the feed, the this, the that, the manure." And he said, "The people who own farms and other similar animal agricultural areas," he said, "usually are very aware of the rat and pest situations that can occur." And he said, "He finds that most of them locally," because he's in this area, "most of them locally are very aggressive and on top of it." He said, "And it's still a problem." And he said, "Have they talked about that with the site? Have the proposed people talked about that?" He goes, "How do you feel about that?" And I said, "I didn't even think about that." And he said, "You might want to bring that up during the meeting to see if anybody's done any studies or any discussions on that." He said, "Because it's not just during construction, but ongoing. And can you trust the people to have that same type of care and concern long-term for pest control?" So that's the other. Independent review, I noticed in this document real quick. It says, "Mayor designates an individual to work with the developer in independent review, ongoing." I would feel a little bit more comfortable if this did go forward, an independent review being very independent, having more bodies, one from the developer, the mayor appointing somebody. I'm not really feeling very comfortable about that. Maybe the city council could appoint somebody and also a third party and another party. You know, I think the commissioned wording could be a little bit better. I would feel better with more independent reviews if this were to go forward. Those are just my random thoughts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. I hate doing this, but I'm going to do it.
Hi, my name is Beverly Keles. I live at 497 Johnny Appleseed Lane. I appreciate everybody, so many smart people here in this room today. I'm not one of them, but I've been living here my whole life and I'm an adamant opponent to gambling because it's just a bad look for Lemmister, in my honest opinion. I'm also, it's not just the racetrack, it's also the proposal for a casino on Jungle Road, which I don't know if anybody in this room has heard about, but I actually heard about that by joining a group on Facebook here. Didn't know anything about a casino at all. So add that to the prospect of this racetrack proposal being given by this guy, Richard Fields, who I have read lots of bad press on. That's a bad thing. Now, my other thought that I just had that she brought up and made me think, on our street, we live near the end of the street and there's a whole bunch of houses that were added after we moved in, near the beginning of our street. And all those wells were contaminated, all of them. And all the developers had to do was put in city water for all those houses. There's about 20, maybe 25 houses in the beginning of Johnny Appleseed Lane on the right that are all contaminated wells. We still have our well. There's a neighbor up next to us, behind us actually. Their well is contaminated by arsenic. So I'm thinking, gee, why are all our wells contaminated on our street to begin with? Because the more I'm listening to all this, it's making me think that this stuff is going down into the ground already. It's already seeping into the ground and it has been. Our house was built in 1987. The houses that were built at the beginning of- Our house was built in 1987, the houses that were built at the beginning of our street were built in, like, what, early 2000s, I think? Was it like early 2000s? So, like I said, that developer that put those houses in had no idea that he was gonna run into that problem. So that, combined with everything else people are talking about, it's made me really even more nervous about this project. And X no to gambling, all across the board.
Thank you, Mr. Valery. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address us this evening? Second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address us this evening? And for a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address us this evening? Before I close the public forum, I'm going to read a letter from a resident that couldn't be here the last time and sent a letter. And it's addressed to the city council, honorable city councilors. "My name is Nancy O'Kosky, and I reside at 2 Debbie Drive here in our beautiful city. I lived here since birth. I am unable to be at the meeting due to disability. From my research, there are no parameters that would disallow me from speaking, not being in attendance either through the Charter or Disability Commission. I would like this letter to be part of the record for tonight's council meeting. Therefore, I am in favor of petition 3225, traffic congestion needs to be addressed once and for all. Petition 41-25 also gets my support. Leamester as we know it, even though we are a city of nearly forty-five citizens, is our hometown. As such, proposed horse racing slash dog racing should be banned from this community. Financially, it may look good, but it really, in reality, is not. I am against animal abuse, gambling, environmental issues, and general crime, which will most definitely increase. Infrastructure is fragile as it is. I urge you to support no horse racing slash dog racing in our hometown. Councilors, you were elected to represent us constituents, now comes the test. Do you have the stamina and courage to protect our community? Eight other communities in the state has banned horse racing. Do your research, stand with us. Don't you want to leave Leamester better for future generations? Thank you respectfully, Nancy O'Kosky." With that, thank you very much for all attending, participating in local government, and your respectful, dignified way you approached your comments. I'm sure it is appreciated by us all. Thank you very much. We'll now go back to our regular agenda, starting off with communication from the mayor,
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of the following. Board of Appeals terms to expire April 15, 2028. Michelle Hagstrom.
Uh, no, just keep going.
Board of Assessors term to expire 4/15/2028. Richard Dondaro. Board of Health term to expire 4/15/2028. Nicole Perry. Wendy Weeks. Counsel on Aging term to expire 4/15/2028. Phyllis Gagny. John Diggins. Donna Smith. Disability Commission term to expire 4/15/2028. Thomas Thelm. Gail Turbide. Martin Turbide. Historical Commission terms to expire 4/15/2028. Diane Sanabria. Mary Marata. Library Board of Trustees terms to expire 4/15/2028. James Despo. Joanne Dionfro. Library Board of Trustees, excuse me, terms to expire 4/15/2026. Susan Schalfo-Zephyr. Planning Board terms to expire 4/15/2030. Jason Pear. Paul Weiser. Recreation Commission terms to expire 4/15/2028. Peggy Steffensen. And Therese McEwen.
C-57 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course.
And, all right, very well, C-57, been given regular course. C-58?
Mr. President, if I may, on the Disability Commission, if I could make a motion, the last name is spelled wrong, it's Thelin, T-H-E-L-I-N, Thomas Thelin. I'd just like that fixed.
All right. I don't think we need a formal amendment for that. We can fix that as a scribbler's error.
Sure.
All right, moving on to C-58, Councilor Schalfo-Zephyr?
Under Library Board of Trustees, Susan Schalfo-Zephyr, I actually, my address is 900 West.
Okay, well, we'll note that in the next...
Correct.
Okay, very well. Moving on to C-58.
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $40,000 to be made to the Medicare expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the Essex and deficiency account.
C-58 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C-58's been given regular course. C-59?
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $1 million to be made to the street resurfacing expense account, the same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency.
C-59 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you. C-59's been given regular course. C-60?
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $75,000 to be made to the legal expense account, the same to be transferred from Essex and deficiency.
C-60 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C-60's been given regular course. C-61?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor Freedom?
Can we find out from the Chair of Finance what that $75,000 to legal expenses are?
Yeah, of course.
Do we know?
I do not know.
Is that for an attorney for the racetrack?
I don't know. I'd have to find out. It's a first time on the calendar, so I'll do my homework over the next two weeks.
Very well, thank you, both of you. C-61?
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests to reappropriate $77,750 to renovate the field, fencing, and dugouts for Lassie League, the same is to be transferred from funds that were appropriated for the Lassie League parking lot.
C-61 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
C-61 been given regular course. C-62?
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $2,000 to be made to the emergency management expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
C-62 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C-62's been given regular course. Petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with 43-25.
Sterling Jewellers Incorporated, DBA K Jewellers, number 1285, requests to renew a license to deal secondhand articles at 12 Water Tower Plaza, Leamester, R.A.
43-25 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, please.
Very well, 43-25's been given regular course. 44-25?
Christopher Revard, 28 Arch Street, Douglas, Mass., requests to renew transient vendor license with the city of Leamester.
Reminder, Mother's Day is coming. 44-25 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Regular course, please.
44-25's been given regular course. 45-25?
Best Buy Stores LP, number 1433, requests to renew a license to deal secondhand articles at 22 Orchard Hill Drive, Leamester, R.A.
45-25 is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, regular course.
Thank you. 45-25's been given regular course. 46-25?
Susan Schalfo-Zephyr, Councilor-at-Large, requests to adopt Chapter 140, Section 139 C of the Massachusetts General Law as follows. No fee shall be charged for a license issued under this section for a service animal as defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act or regulations promulgated, excuse me for that, thereunder, no fee shall be charged for a dog owned by a person age seventy years or over in a city or town that accepts this prescription.
46-25 is referred to the Acting Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Regular course, please. Can I get a referral?
Sure.
To the Animal Control Officer, I think?
Very well.
And maybe Counselor Zephyr would have any...
Do you have anything else you want, anywhere else you want to refer? No, okay. So just a regular course and referral to the Animal Control Officer. All right.
Do you have to set up a public hearing?
Yes, we do. I'm gonna suggest on this one that we do it on 4/28 at 6:30. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman? Yes. Okay. All those in favor of setting the public hearing on 46-25 at 6:30 on April 28th, please recognize usual manner? Okay, so that may be done. Moving on to matters before the city council, starting with the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the free cash summary. We have fifteen, we started with fifteen million, eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars. So far, we have spent eight million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-four cents, leaving us with a balance of six million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixteen cents, which, as we can see, by the time of the next meeting is said and done, that'll be much more greatly depleted. We have the stabilization fund. We began on July 1st, 2024, with a balance of twenty-two million, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. We've added interest in the amount of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. We originally borrowed one million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and forty-five cents, and we repaid one million, two hundred and fifty thousand back, and that leaves us a balance of twenty-three million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, twenty dollars and thirty, sorry, twenty dollars and three cents. And the capital stabilization fund, we began and still have a balance of two million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-two cents. And it looks like she, I'm sure in error, omitted the opioid stabilization, which I don't have in front of me, but there was nothing spent or added to it, to the best of my knowledge, and I'll make sure I have that report attached next time, but it should be the same balance as the previous meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if you don't mind, we're gonna skip to Ways and Means, and I'll bring up the appointment of Mr. Spagnolo. So, Madam Chairwoman, be ready to proceed on that?
I am, Mr. President. This is originally C-53, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests the appointment of Steve Spagnolo to the Board of Assessors, a term to expire on April 15th of 2028. We had the privilege of meeting Steve this evening and reviewing his resume, which he dropped off earlier, so we all had the opportunity to review it. I think Mr. Spagnolo becomes, comes to us with very high recommendations. He is very qualified, he has a great-looking resume, he has the support of many members of the council that have had the opportunity to work with him on a professional level outside of this. So, having said all that, Mr. President, it would be my pleasure to represent, to present Mr. Spagnolo for confirmation to this position. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Arndinger?
I agree.
And Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
You heard the unanimous recommendation to confirm the appointment of Stephen Spagnolo. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Tossi?
Yay.
Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Robbins?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Shippa recorded as yay. By unanimous vote, Mr. Spagnolo, you're confirmed. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Moving on now to matters before finance. Mr. Chairman, ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-54, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests to adopt the attached ordinance update. This ordinance update of Chapter 16, Personnel, Section 16-30 of the Leamester Revised Ordinances reflects the non-union, the non-union employee salary and wages adjustments for the fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2027 time period. The chart is attached, and I am not gonna read that unless there's any objection. We can, we're gonna have a first and second reading on this, so we can do it then into the record. But these increases have been agreed upon by the mayor, and it would be my recommendation that we grant C-54, and I'll ask that you check with the other member of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-54. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-54, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-54 has been granted. Moving on to C-55.
C-55, Mr. President, there's a lot of Fire Department in there, so I'm gonna ask that you give this to the other member of Finance, and I need to abstain, I have an immediate family member on the Fire Department.
All right, don't go too far. Counselor Pauline Cormier, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-55, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests to adopt the attached updates. This ordinance update to Chart 16, Personnel, Section 16-30 of the Leamester Revised Ordinances reflects, one, the Leamester Fire Department's salary and wages adjustments for fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2027, and, two, Department of Public Works' salary and wages adjustments for fiscal year 2025 through fiscal year 2027. Again, this is a very lengthy chart, but it is on the record, it will be on file with the Clerk's office, so it would be my position, and I guess my only, the only person that has a position, would be to grant C-55.
Very well. Is there any discussion? Yes, Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr?
Through the chair to the Acting Chair, could we get copies of the contracts for these? I mean, I was looking at the non-union personnel increases, and I could maybe calculate what the increase was, but it would be helpful to see the agreement. You know, we're voting on these agreements without having seen the contract, so what was negotiated. So I'm gonna, I'm happy to support it, but I do, I would like to get copies of the contracts that reflect all of these pay increases.
I can certainly request copies. We can do that, I guess.
Their public record, I'm sure the mayor's office will cooperate, yeah. So, any other discussion? I'm gonna do this by roll call, starting with Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Tossi?
Yay.
Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Robbins?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Shippa recorded as yay. By a vote of seven to zero with one abstention, C-55 has been granted. We may have, I'm not positive about this, but C-54 may, should have probably been by roll call, too. Mr. Finance Chair, do you want to just make your recommendation to approve that? Again, we'll just ratify the vote by roll call?
Sure.
It's okay with you?
Yeah, I recommend that we grant C-54.
I take it, Counselor Cormier?
I'm in agreement.
In agreement.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All right, Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Tossi?
Yay.
Counselor Schalfo-Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
I'm sorry, Counselor Robbins?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. All right, that brings us all to, I think we have a numbering thing here. C-52?
Fifty-two.
Two is the next one on the agenda, at least.
C-52, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $5,610 to be made to the Twin Cities Rail Trail Grant Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Twin City Rail Trail Lease Payments Account. Basically, after speaking with the Comptroller today, this expense is for some landscaping and things of that nature that are along the rail trail. These are just some minor expenses to have the upkeep and maintenance of the rail trail and the edges of it landscaped, so that it's kept in good order, and it'd be my recommendation that we grant C-52, and I'll ask that you check with the other member of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-52. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of C-52, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-52 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $5,610 be made to the Twin Cities Rail Trail Grant Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Twin Cities Rail Trail Lease Payments Account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-56?
C-56, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of an estimated $15,000 to be made to the DPW Highway Account, the same amount to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. The retroactive portion of seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and sixty-four cents for all DPW departments will be paid from collective bargaining. So basically, there was a sort of a shortfall of fifteen thousand. They have the money to pay the back payment for the agreement, and then the fifteen thousand dollars is for the, to get us through the rest of the fiscal year. So it'd be my recommendation that we grant C dash fifty-six, and once again, I ask that you check the, check with the other member of my committee.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C fifty-six. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Schalfo Zephyr?
Question through the chair to the Finance Chair. Same question, so for this, I mean, this might be actually covered under the, one of the prior, I'm looking for the contract.
Okay.
That resulted in these increases. So if you could get that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I will certainly send an email later tonight and work on getting that. I'm sure they'll have it to us quickly. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C fifty-six, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C fifty-six has been granted, and I do think we need an order for this, right?
Yep. Order that the sum of an estimated fifteen thousand dollars be made to the DPW Highway Account, same amount to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account. The retroactive seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and sixty-four cents for all DPW departments will be paid from collective bargaining. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Anybody opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Counselor Pauline Cormier, you're going to take over the first item under Legal Affairs, because I think Counselor Tossi and I have a conflict.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, I will read it in, just to, just to clarify, and this is the, regarding the appointment of a special legal affairs committee for C dash fifty. At the last City Council hearing, it was determined that City Council President Mark Bedanza must recuse himself from presiding over the matters related to communication C fifty. Additionally, Legal Affairs Chairman Peter Angelini and Legal Affairs Clerk Robert Tossi have conflicts and must recuse themselves from any involvement in this matter. As the current Vice President, I will serve as Acting President for all proceedings related to C dash fifty, given that I am the only remaining member of the Legal Affairs Committee into and ensure compliance with open meeting laws and quorum requirements. I sought and received legal guidance from KP Law. After reviewing City Council Rule Four, which authorizes the President to appoint special committees for specific matters, I am appointing a special legal affairs committee for the limited purpose of addressing the special permit issued to Middlesex Integrative Medicine at twenty-five Mohawk Drive and any related matters. The, and in such, I appointed Counselor Claire Frida as the Chairwoman, Counselor Susan Schalfo Zephyr as the Clerk, and Counselor Brandon Robbins as the third member. So I'm going to turn this over, C dash fifty, to the Chairwoman, Claire Frida.
Just a brief update. We did have a subcommittee meeting tonight at five thirty. And we have a long way to go. We had, we had an attorney, two consultants, an investor, the police chief, the fire chief, the code enforcement officer as well. We clearly didn't have, we also had our attorney from KP Law. We certainly didn't have enough time to cover everything that needed to be covered. One thing we did find out real quick is that host agreements mean absolutely nothing. You know, I don't know, I think it's a lesson to be learned on what, the next host agreement that we'll be looking at, what the ramifications are, because clearly, we're dealing with some bankruptcies and some receiverships, and when that happens in the marijuana industry, or the, yeah, the marijuana industry, there's no lining up as creditors. There's no money. It's, nobody gets anything. So there's some big decisions to be made. We did give it further time. We will be having a continuation of that hearing, and we'll be doing it on an off night, because we have a lot of people, they all agreed to come back, and we'll hopefully get a resolution to the issue.
Okay, good. So the request has been made for thirty, for further time, so C, C dash fifty will be given further time, and you'll let us know on the subcommittee hearing? Put that, just, it'll be on the next agenda. Okay. All right, can we get our President back here?
We need to take a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Discussion and vote.
Sorry. Okay. On the floor is a motion for further time. Would you like me to check with members of your committee? Counselor Schalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Counselor Robbins?
I agree.
Okay, so you heard the unanimous recommendation on C dash fifty, that it be granted further time. All those in favor, please recognize in the usual manner by a vote of six to zero. This has been, C dash fifty has been granted further time.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Moving on to twenty-nine dash twenty-five, is the Acting Chairperson ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. Twenty-nine, twenty-five, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the Flood Plain. Federally mandated update to Flood Plain District EP, Article Six, Section twenty-two dash thirty-four. We had a public hearing earlier today. Everything seemed to work out, work out well. I would recommend to grant this petition, twenty-nine, twenty-five, and I would ask you to ask Pauline.
Okay, Counselor Cormier.
Thank you. Mr. President, I am in agreement to approve. This is a mandated, it's a federally mandated update to the Flood Plain. We have all our recommendations, all the language has been done, everything's come in complete, so I support this as well.
All right, so you heard the unanimous recommendation to grant twenty-nine dash twenty-five. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Tossi?
Yay.
Counselor Schalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Robbins?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
I'll be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero. Twenty-nine dash twenty-five has been granted. Moving on to twenty-four dash twenty-five, is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. Thomas M. Bavensi, on behalf of Steve Boucher, requests to amend the zoning district map for parcel three fifty-two dash six, such that entire parcel will be zoned Residence B, since a portion is currently zoned industrial. Again, we had the public hearing earlier today. It's a piece of property that I feel is in need of repair, and I would, I would suggest that we grant petition twenty-four dash twenty-five.
And I'll check with Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant twenty-four dash twenty-five. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none?
Mr. President? I just, you know, want to say very quickly, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say this. I just want to, you know, thank Mr. Boucher for stepping up to the plate with this property. It is, it's an eyesore. I know it's not my ward, it's Ward Two, but we all traverse the city and have friends, family, and others that live in neighborhoods, and I've heard about this property from people that live over there as well. Certainly, it's, it's been an eyesore, probably a rat infestation and a burden for the city. I know I was the Chair of Finance, I think it was last year, they, the mayor had to send an appropriation down to take a partial piece of a wall down that was collapsing, very dangerous to the neighborhood. And I believe I said at the time that we did not think that was going to be the end of this, that we'll be hearing from it again, and I don't think it was intended that we'd be hearing from it about this in this manner. I thought the city was going to be on the hook for more money to, to take additional portions of the building down, but I'm glad that all of those debts have been paid back to the city. And we, this is the last time we're going to hear about this. We're not spending more money on it. It's going to get ripped down, developed, and put on the tax rolls. So I just want to thank the developer for stepping up to the plate, because I think it's, it's a good thing for the city and for the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, so anybody else? Counselor Schalfo Zephyr?
Thank you very much. No, I am very happy to support this. I'm glad that Mr. Boucher recognized the need for additional housing in the city. So it's nice cleaning up that corner lot. It has been a mess, and I would imagine, you know, public safety has it for the neighborhood that's surrounded by other homes. So I'm happy to support this. The city needs more housing, and this will provide some.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? All right, this will be by roll call. Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Tossi?
Yay.
Counselor Schalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Robbins?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
I'll be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero. Twenty-four dash twenty-five has been granted. Thirty-five dash twenty-five, Mr. Chairman, you're looking for a continued public hearing and further time?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. President.
All right, and Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
I'm going to suggest for a public hearing date and time on this, April twenty-eighth at, let's see, six twenty-five. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting thirty-five dash twenty-five further time and continuing the public hearing to April twenty-eighth at six twenty-five, please recognize usual manner. All right, so that may be done by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to forty-one dash twenty-five, this has a continued public hearing date, but why don't you read it into the record, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. President. Petition forty-one, twenty-five, Lisa Nugent of forty-five Beth Avenue, Leominster, requests that the City Council prohibit all horse and dog racing and any associate betting or wagering anywhere within Leominster, Massachusetts by the following. Amend Article One, Section twenty-two dash four definitions by adding the following definition: Racetrack, any track of land where horses or dogs are raced and where any form of betting or wagering on the speed or ability of horses or dogs are permitted or conducted. Amend Article Three, Section twenty-two dash seventeen, underlying District's Table of Uses under Business, uses to add racetrack as listed use and to add letter N for not allowed in every column for each and every district. Amend Article Three, Section twenty-two dash eighteen, overlay District's Table of Uses under Business Uses to add racetrack as a listed use and to add the letter U for underlying District in each and every column for each and every overlay District. The purpose of this zoning amendment is to prohibit commercial horse or dog racing anywhere within the city of Leominster.
All right, so we have a public hearing scheduled on this on May twelfth. Given that, I assume your recommendation is further time?
That is correct, Mr. President.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Okay with that? Any discussion on the further time? All those in favor of further time, please indicate usual manner. So forty-one dash twenty-five has been given further time. Moving on to, we did Ways and Means. Moving on to public safety, is the Chairman ready to report?
Mr. President, I also need to abstain from this one. It involves my employer.
Okay.
Thank you.
So noted. Ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Forty-two dash twenty-five, Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Inc., requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Torrey Circle, National Grid, to install one jointly-owned pole on Torrey Circle, beginning at a point approximately three hundred and sixty-seven feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Willard Street and Torrey Circle. National Grid, to install one new thirty-five-foot Class Three pole and anchored number P two fifty on Torrey Circle to reposition the overhead lines that have been knocked down by dump trucks per the customer's request. Leominster, Mass., location approximately as shown on plan attached. We have a public hearing scheduled for our next meeting on April twenty-eighth at six forty-five PM, so I'm going to request that we give this further time and that you check with the other members of my committee.
Counselor Schalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Counselor Frida?
I agree.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving forty-two dash twenty-five further time, please indicate usual manner. Forty-two dash twenty-five has been given further time. Under old business, new business, I'll note that we did give a public hearing to forty-six dash twenty-five at six thirty. That conflicts, I'm sorry, yes, at six thirty, and that conflicts with the hearing on forty-one dash twenty-five, which is the same time. So if it's okay, moving back to forty-six dash twenty-five, to the Chair, to recommend, where am I?
Page five.
That's Legal Affairs. So Counselor Tossi, would it be okay with you if we went with, let's say, six twenty on, on that one?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is that okay with you, Counselor Cormier?
Yes.
All right, any discussion from the Council? All those in favor of six, six twenty public hearing on forty-six dash twenty-five, please indicate usual manner. All right, so that's fixed. Anything else on the old business or new business? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
The motion.
Counselor Cormier, Cormier, all those in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you very much, all.